Done this recently to renew our participation in the CHIP program, which provides funds for housing rehabilitation and other helpful services for people that qualify. And in order to make application for the CHIP program, we need to enter into a partnership agreement among the three. And this is the necessary legislation to do that. On April 22nd, the Great Lakes Community Action Program would like to have all of the legislation to them so that they can further this application to then submit it to the state. So we're on a little short timeframe for approving ordinance 22-31. So I know the administration would ask that the suspension be made for 2231.
Okay. And who, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but who signed that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Steve Lefford.
Thank you.
And then there also are three ordinances to deal with budgetary matters. And possibly Kathy can talk about each one individually, but I think that all of them are matters that need the attention of council right away in order for us to continue on with each of those subject matters. I don't know Kathy, if you wanted to talk about any of the urgency of any of 22-30, 32, or 33.
Sure, I can do that. Ordinance 22-30 has to do with needing to appropriate more in the budget in the Council Clerk's area to pay for election expense. This expense came through when we received the payment from the county that we usually get twice a ye- twice a year. And when I went to charge the expenses that we had to pay, there was not enough in the line for election expense. And that was due to all the charter amendments that we had on the ballot last year. So that was why that was so much more than what we had originally budgeted. So that was 22-30. 22-32, that has to do with the trail connectivity. We received a donation from Mr. Cal now for that project. So we would like to get that allocated into the budget. And then there was also a little bit of leftover grant money that we received from the Tiffin Charitable Foundation for the project for the electrical charging stations. And I had gotten ahold of Jody Rhinebolt and she asked, you know, if they would like to have that refunded to them. And they, they said they would like that. So it was a little over $900, $909.27. So I needed to get that into the budget so I can send that back to them.
Who does that go back to?
Tiffin Charitable Foundation.
Thank you.
And then 22-33, that one is, we're not allocating any more money into the budget. We're, we're reallocating into different areas. So what we want to do is take money out of the personal services wages benefits area. And we want to put the same amount back into another professional services area. And that's so that the street department can work on hiring a summer employee. That's what all those are for.
Who signed those three?
Steve did.
Steven, okay, thank you. Thank you Kathy and Law Director. Mayor, anything to add?
No, I appreciate them jumping in and doing that so I could get the webinar up and on social media and everything else for us. So thank you. A couple of non-suspensionary items. There is mayor's request tonight. 22-11 for sanitary sewer easement for Runyon's Reserve. The only thing I would ask, there was, there is a second easement that we're requesting. So whatever committee that goes to, we're also ready to go with the Fairview Hill sanitary and drainage easement. So if you would be willing, whomever's committee that goes to, when you schedule your meeting to discuss Runyon's Reserve sanitary easement, if you would also discuss the exact same matter, the only difference is it's for the Fairview Hill condominium development on Euclid. We would appreciate that. So I had meant to get a separate request in today because it came up this morning. And unfortunately, the schedule just did not allow that to happen. I think Nick can vouch more for me. I finally left for lunch at about three o'clock today. I was, I was a little, I was getting a little hangry, so I was able to get something to eat. So I would appreciate if whatever committee that goes to, if that would be taken up for consideration as well, because it's literally the exact same thing, just on a different development site.
Yeah, Councilman Perkins actually said to assign that to your committee. You're good with that? Okay.
Sorry guys, yeah.
It's okay. Okay. Does anyone else have anything for the committee at the whole?
Uh, yeah, one thing, Mayor, this was for Runyon's and Fairview. And do we have numbers for those or not?
What do you mean by numbers? I'm sorry.
We don't have anything already prepared at all.
You haven't prepared this evening for Runyon's Reserve. That's, that's, that's mayor's request 2211. So I guess in theory, mayor's request 2212 really would be the request for the same thing for Fairview Hill. It was just, we neglected to get that on the initial request.
Okay, thank you.
Dawn? Do you want to take care of the finance reports this evening? Motion?
Ken?
Who are you asking? I'm sorry.
I was asking if Dawn would take care of.
Dawn, okay, thank you.
You're, you're talking about Kathy's report, right?
Yes. Correct.
Thank you. Anything else for the committee at the whole? Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, don't know if this is proper time, but I just like to ask questions for my benefit. And I think the public listening in would like to know too. And maybe everyone's knowledgeable but me, but we just spoke about the Fairview Hill condominium. Where is that at in Tiffin? This is the first I've heard of this and what location is it?
Yes, Mayor.
Fairview Hill is the condominium development. As I stated a few moments ago, Euclid Avenue that Rich's Ice is constructing near the fairgrounds.
Oh, okay, yes, I'm familiar, yeah, I've been out there, okay. And then the other one, was it Runyon? Was that the one that Steve and I went to a meeting with?
Yeah, so.
East, or East Davis, okay, I'm familiar with that, thank you very much, okay. And is that a bit?
Anything else, Councilman Jones?
Uh, yes, matter of fact, I was going to bring up for the public's benefit in mind. When Kathy was talking about ordinance 2233, reducing personal benefits. I'm just going to ask, and I probably will ask, we're not reducing anyone's wages or benefits. It's transferring funds, more or less. Did I hear that correctly?
Uh, yes, Director Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. I know it's a little bit confusing. What we're, we're not actually going to pay this person through our regular payroll, but we're going to transfer the funds that we would have used if we had. What they want to do is use a, like a third party hiring firm rather than running it through our own payroll. So we have to put it in a different area of the budget.
Okay, I would just thought maybe it was a blanket on all employees and I was going to say, oh, wait, okay, thank you.
Yep.
But it still is the street department summer employee.
That's correct.
Well, I just couldn't, I think it's just good, everyone knows that and okay, maybe everyone knew it, but I'll still ask them, so thank you.
Anything else for the committee at the whole? Okay, seeing done, we will adjourn and wait for the regular meeting.
Is Jeff with us at all?
Said he was going to try to make it, but didn't think.
I just wondered if he was a participant. I checked out the participants and no names came up.
Yep, no, he is not.
Yeah, I don't see him out there, there are four, but he is not one of them. Bridget, when, when did you plan to do the, so I don't see it listed here. So we have the announcement, it was sent out for the CDBG public hearing tonight. Are you wanting to do that under my mayor's report? Or are you wanting to do that immediately after roll call? Because it was sent out to the, the media properly. It's just not on the agenda here, so I'm not sure where exactly you want to do that.
Um, I'm fine if we do it under your mayor's report, it doesn't, or whatever you feel is best, yeah.
Okay.
If, if I can ask, Mayor, do you know on the notice, what did the notice say about the timing? Would it be at the beginning of the meeting or would it be during your report? I know that the Zoom invite for all of us, it said it was going to be during your report, but.
Yeah, I believe that is, I don't know if the actual notice included the exact part of the meeting. I think it was just, oh, Nick, go ahead.
Uh, it said, I'm sorry, I just had it.
Can you send that to me so I can?
Yeah, I can send that to you. I believe it, I believe it did state it was during the mayor's report. I will send that to you right away, Council President.
Thank you. So then, Mayor, do I still need to announce it? Or do you do that then during your meeting or during your report, excuse me?
Then I can just go ahead and do it during my report.
Okay. Yeah, let's.
No, I apologize. The first of two public hearings will be held on April 4th at 7:00 PM as an online video call immediately before the evening city council meeting. So it will be, be after roll call.
After roll call, okay.
Okay, so you got it, Bridget.
Okay, I'm looking at it right now, just to make sure.
And then that's Adam Gilmore will join us. I see Adam and David Zach are both on here, so.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, so do I, is it this whole word document that I would announce? That I would?
Bridget, I can, you don't need to read the entire document, but you need to, enough of it so that the public understands that this is the CDBG formula. Maybe it's the 2022 formula program. And just paraphrase, just briefly, the, the purpose.
Bridget, what, what, what I would say, Bridget, that first paragraph, not that line, that first paragraph, if you just read those like three sentences, that will, that will suffice because that explains what it is, what the amount is and why we're doing it. So that, that I think would be totally fine. Do you have that document right there that Nick sent?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you just read that first actual paragraph, not the capitalized headline, I think you'll be good.
Okay. Sorry, one second.
To make my screen bigger here, but I'm afraid I'm going to lose you all if I play around with these icons, so. But I can see, see everybody.
Okay, so it's seven, it's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council Meeting of April 4th, 2022 to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by myself this evening. So if everyone would please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven. Thy kingdom come, that will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this air, give us bread, and forgive our trespasses. As we forgive those trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy, it's the kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen. For the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rhodes. Councilmember Gillig. Councilmember Yanatuno. Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard. Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Present.
Let the record show that five of the seven council members are present. At this time, I would like to announce a public hearing for the CDBG. This, the city of Tiffin intends to apply the Ohio Development Service Agency for funding under the Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Program, a federally funded program administered by the state. The city of Tiffin is eligible for approximately $150,000 for fiscal year 2022 CDBG funding, providing the allocation is similar to fiscal year 2020. And the city of Tiffin meets applicable program requirements.
So with that, if there is anyone who wishes to address this public hearing from the public, please use the raise hand function and we can bring you in. Madam President, you have Adam Gilmore. Should be joining any second, there he comes. Okay, Adam, you'll just have to unmute yourself and the floor is yours.
All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you, this is the first of two required public meetings to apply for the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds. This meeting, we're only going to be discussing the basic outlines of the CDBG program and the requirements that the city must fulfill in order to get those funds. So for those of you who are unaware, my name is Adam Gilmore. I am the Development Coordinator at the Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership, which is the organization that is contracted with the city of Tiffin to manage community development activities. So this includes the grant administration for CDBG. So the Community Development Block Grant is a federally funded grant that comes through the state of Ohio at the Department of Development or Development Service Agency. I'm not sure if exactly if they've actually gotten their name fully switched over yet. And it is designed with the primary objective of developing viable urban communities. So what that means is that there are, they are principally focused on low to moderate income individuals by providing decent housing, suitable environment, and expanded economic opportunities. So CDBG in Ohio has traditionally been handled on allocation basis. This, however, will be the final year for that allocation basis. We are eligible for, the city of Tiffin is eligible for up to $150,000 in funding in the 2022 program year. Following this final allocation of $150,000, the CDBG grant program will move to a competitive grant basis, which means we will have to apply and will sort of be eligible for up to a certain amount that the state decides to put out there for CDBG funding. So CDBG programming must address three, one of three national objectives. The first, as I mentioned earlier, is that it must benefit low to moderate income individuals. So this is probably the main area that you've heard of when it comes to CDBG. If you've had dealt with it before, this is how most of the projects are chosen, is that they will benefit low to moderate income individuals. Second, it aids in the prevention or elimination of slums and blight. And then third and finally, it meets a need with a particular urgency. The simplest of these three national objectives and the one that is the most common, as I mentioned, is the creating a benefit for low to moderate income individuals. So to meet this requirement, the service area for a project must be at least 51% low to moderate income. How you calculate that service area varies. So the best example is perhaps the size of a roadway. You could have a small little lane that's going to serve a smaller area than say a large arterial highway. So calculating the service area of a project and what census blocks or what areas to include within that designation is going to vary depending on what projects are chosen. There are some other ways that you can get to that, creating a benefit for low to moderate income individuals. And that can be that the project is going to be serving a low to moderate income clientele. So there are certain groups of individuals who are presumed by statute to be low to moderate income. And those are individuals such as the elderly, the homeless, or the severely disabled. Similarly, a project can meet the LMI national objective by providing or improving residential structures that are going to end up housing LMI households. Job retention and creation activities that are also meant to primarily focus on LMI individuals would also fall within the bucket of that larger national objective. This is the, the Low to Moderate Income National Objective is the one that we have used primarily in the past here in the city of Tiffin. And I, based on the projects that we're looking at currently, I expect it would be the likely objective that we will be using. However, we'll get more into more detail with that in the second public meeting. Importantly, in regards to the Low to Moderate Income aspect, and I know I keep saying that phrase quite a lot, but it is really central to CDBG, is that the regulation requires that not less than 70% of CDBG funds be spent addressing LMI needs. So that is the standard, it's a very basic overview of the standard allocation for CDBG that we will be receiving. Of course, considering that all our application materials are handled properly and we select a eligible project, we will get $150,000 to spend on this. But there are a couple other types of CDBG funding that I think you should be aware of. These are very much more project dependent and they are both competitive grants. So we are working with the administration, I know we've met with the mayor already and a couple of other folks about what projects may be eligible for the types of funding that I'm going to be discussing next. However, these are not guaranteed that we will be applying for these. I just think that you should be aware of them in case we do find a project that meets these requirements and that will benefit the city of Tiffin. So the first of those two programs is the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant. And the second would be the Critical Infrastructure Grant. And both of those are again within the CDBG grant program. So NRG, we could receive up to $750,000 towards public facilities construction or reconstruction and/or infrastructure rehabilitation in targeted residential areas of distress. So importantly, for NRG funds, they cannot be used downtown. So whatever the city would consider to be its central business district, its central hub of the city is not eligible for funds, no matter if that project that may be taking place there, let's take for example, the Community Kitchen, because that's located downtown and despite the fact that it would be serving primarily LMI individuals, it would not be eligible due to its location. So additionally, another restriction on NRG funds is that they can't be used for public service activities, housing activities, economic development activities, large scale infrastr- or large scale infrastructure projects. Those large scale infrastructure projects would be better covered by the next form of CDBG funding that I'll be talking about. Something to consider when, if we do end up doing NRG CDBG is that our allocation, that $150,000 can be used as our 15% or used towards our 15% leverage that's required for an NRG grant. The second grant program within CDBG that I mentioned is the Critical Infrastructure Grant. This is a much more focused grant than either of the two previous grants, the allocation or NRG. And it is intended, intended to assist communities with large scale, single purpose infrastructure needs. That grant is for up to $500,000. And to be eligible for that funding, the infrastructure in question must be failed actively or in a failing condition. So getting close to the point where it will fail or be unsafe for use. Like I said, we're working to figure out whether there are projects that would be eligible for these two discretionary grants. But right now, our primary focus and what we will likely end up doing is going forward with simply that allocation grant. If you know of any projects that would be eligible for either of those two discretionary grants, let me know. Or reach out to the administration, we can begin looking at those projects and see if that's something we'll be able to do. So importantly, of course, with grants is there is an administrative side of things. Like I said, the Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership handles the Community Development Block Grant and administers it for the city of Tiffin. So importantly, with that, up to 15% of CDBG funds may be used towards administrative costs associated with the grant. This includes costs related to citizen participation, application preparation, the grant agreement, the environmental review, anything that may come up with drawing down the funds, record keeping regarding those funds, reporting on those funds back to the state to make sure that we're in compliance. And then also the audits and the closeout that typically follow up on the CDBG program. As mentioned a moment ago, CDBG does require a public participation component. And it's a pretty robust component. They really want to see that the citizenship has been engaged with the grant and making sure that that's being selected according to the needs and desires of the community. Thankfully, Tiffin is very well positioned for this. We operate the Dream Big Tiffin process. We wrapped up the second cycle of that back in January. And what that does is that brings in our project ideas from community stakeholders and residents and ranks project ideas as well as fully submitted and fleshed out projects, takes them in, categorizes them, ranks them, and has a very strong public feedback component in it. In the 22, 2022 cycle, we received 113 pieces of individual public feedback on the projects that were submitted, and that included ranking the projects. So we have now a pretty good idea of where we stand in terms of what the public is looking for from community development projects in the city of Tiffin, thankfully. That has resulted in us having a total of nine priority projects that we are actively reviewing funding options for, of which CDBG may be one of those funding options for these projects. Just to give you a bit of background on what we have used CDBG for in the past, things like the Nature Trails Project, as well as the Riverview Park Rehabilitation, those were undertaken using CDBG funds. So like I mentioned at the beginning, this is simply the first meeting to give everyone an overview of the CDBG program, the grant opportunities that are available and what money is out there. And to really get you start thinking about what sort of projects you'd like to see. We will be moving forward with a second meeting here hopefully pretty soon so that we can get enabling legislation. And that is very important in terms of applying for the grant. So enabling legislation would. So enabling legislation would lay out specifically what we are. Applying for, how much we're applying for, and what projects that money would be going. Towards the applications for CDBG are due by June fifteenth at eleven fifty-nine PM. And so at the moment, we are not in any sort of time crunch. I don't want you to come away with that impression. We are well positioned and we are. I feel right in line with where we should be at this point. Cat go away. I know that we have kind of thrown a lot of information at you in a fairly short amount of time. So if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And I will sort of turn it over from there.
Thank you, Adam. Is there anyone from the public who has any questions for Adam?
Yeah, I guess if there's anyone else in the public that wishes to speak or address this public hearing. Now is your opportunity. Just use the raise hand function that's located on your screen. Hey, I do not see any hands, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Any council members have any questions or comments for Adam? Councilman Jones. You're on mute. Still muted.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
I'm muting there. Well, thank you, Mr. Gilmore. That was very thorough. I had three bullet points here I was going to address with you. And I was going to mention that Riverview Park two years ago roughly and. Nature Trails Park coming up this coming some summer as part of that hundred and fifty thousand you were talking about. I wanted to be clear with the public. It's not the full hundred and fifty thousand, but you addressed that also. You said that fifteen percent could go to administrative costs. So I didn't want people thinking every penny of one fifty was going into some project. In the third one, you answered, and I guess I should have known this, and I probably did. But I was going to ask who comes up with this list of projects? And I think you said the mayor and several others and public participation. You've touched all those, so thank you very much.
Yes, so the TSEP, I just want to be clear, is just administering the city's wishes. So what the city plans to do, the projects that they have, the projects that they see as valuable. TSEP will administer the CDBG grant on behalf of the city for those projects.
Anything else, Councilman Jones?
No, no, thank.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, the only thing I would add typically these projects, they've come through Dream Big Tiffin here recently in the past. We would just come up with some ideas to the administration, but typically the administration will recommend one or two projects to city council. And then get city council approval, which we'll do here in the very near future. This was just the first public hearing as required by. Law for us to update the public on the process and the plan going forward. But here in the near future, we will have a project or two in front of you all.
Yes, Law Director.
Yeah, Adam, if you could also tell us a little bit more about the second meeting in terms of. When you might expect that there would be a second public hearing. And in the purpose and the agenda for that particular hearing.
Yeah, so the second public hearing will be. I'm sorry, I have a cat behind my computer who has chose get off the desk. Who has to decide, yeah. So the second public hearing, the timing on that is dependent upon the public notice requirements. That are imposed on the program by law. So the, we are required at least ten days beforehand to put out a public notice for that meeting. And then in two separate weeks, one notice in each week, we are required to publish that notice. So ten days out, we would publish a notice and then. Sometime in the next week, we would publish that notice again to make sure that the public is aware of when that is happening. We have talked about, though it is not required, that the meeting would precede another city council meeting. But again, that is up to all you, and I wouldn't want to put you in any sort of position in that way. So if you would have prefer us to hold the meeting another way, I'd be happy to get that set up and we would do that likely over Zoom or at TSEP's office. So it's dependent, but if I remember correctly from the math we did. In order for enabling legislation to have three public hearings prior to the. Deadline, I believe it would need defiant, the legislation would mean to be introduced at the first meeting in May, I believe. In terms of, I'm sorry, there was a second question there and I got distracted by a cat.
Yes, no, that's very helpful about the timing and that would be May second and the sixteenth of May is the next regular meeting. And then June sixth would be third reading and passage. In time for the deadline of June fifteenth. So that works well, Adam, if we can achieve that. Tell us about the 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 agenda, the the purpose of that second meeting, second public hearing.
So the second public hearing is really to get more in depth on the specific projects that have been. Or the city plans to move forward with in terms of seeking CDBG funding. So that would require us to go over the sort of allocations that would be put towards each project and outline what those projects are doing. For the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Adam? Okay, and Mayor, if there's still not anyone from the public.
No, Madam President, there are no hands. Everything appears to be good, so I think you can probably close this hearing unless there are any other comments.
Okay, seeing that, yes, I will declare the public hearing closed. Um, next item of business. Are the minutes were distributed from March seventh, twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-two, regular and committee at the whole meetings. March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two special meeting and March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two regular and committee at the whole meetings. Hopefully, anyone, everyone has had a chance to review those. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, these minutes will stand approved as presented. Moving into committee reports, is there anyone from the Finance Committee that has a report?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Leopard. Law Community Planning, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you. Law Community Planning meeting was held March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at four thirty PM. In the Marquese Committee Room. Tending were committee members Steve Leopard, Ben Gilligan, Dan Perry. Along with Mayor Mott, Director of Law, Brandon Howard, and David Zach, President and CEO of TSEP. I recall the meeting to order and announced the purpose of the meeting was to discuss the mayor's request for legislation number. Twenty-two dash oh nine, Tax and Senate Review Council recommendations. The city of Tiffin Tax and Senate Review Council had met. Monday, March seventh, twenty twenty-two, to discuss various enterprise zone agreements. Tax increment financing districts and community reinvestment areas. At this meeting, the TIRC made the recommendation to continue all the current agreements and abatements as they exist. The mayor requests that the Tiffin City Council pass legislation approving the recommendations of the TIRC. The committee reviewed the minutes of the TIRC as presented, which included community reinvestment areas. Pre nineteen ninety-four and post nineteen ninety-four. Enterprise zone agreements and and TIF reviews city of Tiffin. Comments of the TIRC were given by David Zach and Mayor Mott. Concerning the performance of the reinvestment areas, it was noted in the minutes that the Director of Finance, Kathy Coffin. Had no issues with TIF reviews city of Tiffin. The motion was introduced by Councilmember Perry to authorize the Director of Law to prepare legislation approving the recommendations. The TIRC, the motion was seconded by Councilmember Gilligan passed by three to zero vote. Mayor Mott asked if the committee, asked if the committee. Would consider approving a chip partnership agreement. As there is an April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two deadline. The mayor informed the committee that the state of Ohio Department of Development. Office of Community Development provides financial assistance to local governments under its program year. Twenty twenty-two, Community Housing Impact and Preservation Chip Program. The program addresses local housing needs such as repair and rehabilitation. The city of Tiffin, city of Oistoria, and Seneca County, each an eligible grantee. Desire to file a combined application as partners under the chip program to increase the eligible funding for the city. The motion was introduced by Councilmember Gilligan, seconded by Councilmember Perry. To authorize the Director of Law to prepare legislation approving the chip partnership agreement. Authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Motion was approved by three to zero vote. Without further business, the meeting was adjourned.
Any questions for Councilman Leopard? Oh, yes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't attend the meeting, and I know this is a annual ordinance. And I just took some notes and I just wanted to be clearer this year than maybe I should ask more questions last couple of years. But some of these are for nine years out at fifty percent and seventy-five percent. Some of these are out. Twenty-nine and thirty years at a hundred percent. It just sounds to me like twenty-nine or thirty years is a long time between reviewing these. Councilman Leopard or someone explain why twenty-nine years is jumping out at me like that.
I'll defer to the mayor or the law director.
Yes, Law Director.
Yes, yeah, with with each one of these incentives, at the time that they were granted. There either was an agreement that was approved by city council. And they had certain requirements that whether they were a certain percentage, like you're seeing, or a timeframe. So each of those were approved by specific legislation or if they were in a particular. CRA, Community Reinvestment Area, they automatically qualified. In certain circumstances for a certain percentage. So those are all by statute or and or specifically by agreement of the city. Council when they were each started. What the Texas Review Review Commission is there checking to make sure that all the elements are still of the property. And the business associated are in compliance with the the agreement. As long as they are, they will continue as originally approved by city council. Does that answer your question, Councilman Jones?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. And just to be clear for me, and I keep saying to public, I'd like to drag them into this. This is only property taxes, correct? No, that's what we're talking about, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Councilman Leopard. Materials and equipment, Councilman Jones.
No reported this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
Your report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and public property, anyone from this committee have something to report? Okay, I'll take.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Perkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And economic development and downtown planning, Council Councilwoman Yana Tino.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need for a committee at the whole meeting? Okay, seeing none, we will move into reports of the officers, his honor, Mayor Aaron Demonts.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. First up this evening. We have our Parks and Recreation Director Bryce Kuhn, as well as his right-hand man Mason Correll. I'm going to bring them in. They're here to provide the annual Parks and Rec update to city council. I know they've got a lot of material to cover. They they already were here just recently to tell you about the playground. So I'm sure that's incorporated in here as well. So as soon as they're in. Trying to get them in here. There, now they should be on their way in. All right, Bryce, you should be able to hear us.
Uh, yes.
Hey, there he is.
That was, that was funny. I was, I thought it was like the little key f- or like the key adapter that goes from the iPad. That was trying to like interact and I kept denying your request to become a panelist.
Well, I was just concerned that maybe either Adam or his cat or Councilman Jones put you to sleep. So I was wondering about your there. I thought I was going to come wake everyone up.
Shoot, well, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, obviously, we're going to be speaking behalf for what's happened in the last year with Parks and Recs as well as this year. We're not requesting or coming to you asking for more funds tonight, so that's a, that's a easy. Easy piece there for our event for tonight, but tonight, let's see if I can share the screen. Always says host disabled participant screen sharing. Can you give me permission to screen share, Aaron?
Yes, you should be able to now.
Thank you. Screen. All right. Can everybody see that? Did I do it correctly?
Looks good, Aaron.
Cool. Is my face still shown or is it the screen?
Your face is just really small off the side, so.
That's perfect. That's how it should be. All right. All right, so each year, Tiffin Parks and Recreation, along with our park board selects and recognizes an individual. And or organization as volunteer of the year. Literally hundreds of volunteers put forth a tremendous amount of effort in making our parks, programs, and community a better place to live. Work and play. In early twenty twenty, with the appearance of the novel coronavirus, Tiffin Parks and Rec. Along with the city administration and the guidance guidance of Ohio Department of Health. Had to make several difficult decisions about how we proceeded. We closed basketball, volleyball, and tennis courts, roped off the playgrounds, canceled all programming and events. And made the decision to not open the outdoor pool for the twenty twenty season. This was heartbreaking, excuse me, this was heartbreaking not only for us, but for the city of Tiffin. Even though the fun activities that we usually had would not be happening. People still turned to the parks as a place to get away from the craziness of the world. They could go out for a walk, get a brush of breath of fresh air, and just enjoy being outdoors. As we began to adapt to this quote new normal, we started to notice something else new. Intricate chalk draw, chalk drawings began to show up along the trails of Oakley Park. Then at the police station, then at the fire station, then on the sidewalks downtown, soon as chalk art sprawled all over the city. Couldn't figure out where it was coming from or who the mystery artist was. And it wasn't until the spring of twenty twenty-one at the Oakley Park cleanup, when somebody finally pointed out the chalk lady to Bryce and I. We went over and introduced ourselves. We found out she actually had a name, Patty Roush. I don't know if Patty knows or not, but her artwork at the parks and throughout the city provided just the distraction that people needed. From all that was going on in the world. Although the kids couldn't play at the playgrounds, they still wanted to go to the park. Just to check out the latest Pokemon drawing or to walk across the three D bridge that was suspended over a river. Now, these drawings were not just a fifteen-minute project that Patty could knock out real quick. Some of them took eight hours, some longer, some longer, and some even took multiple days to complete. In a few weeks, the rain would completely wash them away and she would have to start new. Patty could have chosen to put her art on canvas and keep it on a wall at home, but instead she chose to share her talent with the community. Well, we're giving you guys a QR code. In twenty twenty-one. We launched our Explore Art Camp as an addition to our Summer Day Camp series, along with the Punyon Project, Reclaim It. Doug's Chainsaw Art and the Tiffin Art Guild. Patty was there to help by demonstrating her skills to the next generation of artists here in Tiffin and Seneca County. Here's a quick time lapse video of some of the art that. Here's a quick time lapse video of some of the art that Patty does.
That was a two-day.
Yeah, most people take pictures. And now it's on on the computer, so it never go away.
All right. So, yeah, that's that's some pretty cool stuff, and we're lucky to have have been able to to see all of that in our parks and super grateful for all that Patty did during COVID and just kind of giving everybody something to look forward to. So it's without further ado that we would like to present Patty Roush with the twenty twenty-one, sorry, twenty twenty, Tiffin Parks and Recreation Volunteer of the Year Award. All right, since we're a year behind, you guys get to stick with us for another presentation, so bear with me. I'm I'm not I'm not going to be try not to be as as boring as the CDBG funds. Sorry, Adam, I know that you have to go through that, but we don't have cats. Parks and Rec, we try to keep it light, so. And Bryce says we don't have any cats in the room, so the computer will stay silent. So the next group we would like to recognize began their collaboration and volunteering with Tiffin Parks and Rec long before twenty twenty. It's my understanding that the Tiffin Seneca Isaac Walton League of America has been volunteering with our department since the nineties. Every year, our department hosts a youth fishing derby on the first Saturday in June at the Isaac Walton Pond. The members call it the City Fishing Derby, but I'm not sure why, because they do the vast majority of the work. They provide everything from extra poles to hot dogs for bait, to volunteers to take fish off and measure them, to lunch and door prizes for all the participants, and it's free for the public to come, so. As if that isn't enough, they always lend a helping hand with our Explore Nature Camp. Or on the last day of camp each year, uh, nope, sorry, wrong paper. On the last day of camp, we spend the day at Isaac Walton, where the kids get to fish, learn how to shoot a bow and arrow, watch bird banding demonstrations, and once again, get a free lunch provided by the amazing kitchen staff. With all the work that this organization and its volunteers have done for our department, their service doesn't stop there. They host several days throughout the summer where some of the students from the Seneca County Opportunity Center will come out and get to enjoy all the league has to offer. Each year, the league also puts on a disability hunt at Miller Conservation Farm. They build wheelchair accessible blinds and special trailers in order to provide those with disabilities an opportunity to hunt who wouldn't be able to who wouldn't be able to do so otherwise. The work they do for our community is simply outstanding. They don't do it for the recognition, but rather for the purpose of teaching the community and especially especially the next generation of hunters and anglers, the importance of conservancy and stewardship. So it's my honor to recognize the Tiffin Seneca Isaac Walton League of America as a Tiffin Parks and Recreation twenty twenty-one Volunteer of the Year. Whoever wants to take it. Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
We're going to do a quick photo op, just hang tight for two minutes. Oh, yeah, you can do that. Yeah. I'll just let Bryce hop in the picture with Mayor, and I'll just kind of keep going that way. I don't hold you guys up, so. All right, so since city council meetings, you know, can kind of be tedious, Parks and Rec wanted to spice things up a little bit, so we're going to hit you guys with some trivia. Oh, sorry, we didn't scroll through the the Isaac Walton picture, so here you got pond out there and all the kids happy to catch fish. So, all right, here's the trivia. All right, see, if you guys know any of this, if you do, just unmute yourself and scream at me. This six-acre park was given to the city in eighteen eighty-eight and named commemorate the first settlement of Tiffin. Councilman Jones, I see your hand.
Little Hedges Park.
No, no. Nope, not that one. All right, Councilman Leopard.
That's just Boyer Park.
No, no. This is actually, I I can only see four cameras, so I'm just gonna just gonna move on. This is actually Oakley Park. So there you there you have it. So. When the settlements of Tiffin and Fort Ball merged to form Tiffin in eighteen fifty, three prominent businessmen purchased areas of land north of the river in eighteen eighty-eight, when Tiffin came into its own. With the discovery of natural gas, the land was sold as lots for homes and locations for industries. Six acres bounded by Grand Sixth and Park Avenues were given to the city by the three landowners. The six acres would form Oakley Park to commemorate the village of Oakley, the first name settlement of Tiffin, which settled in eighteen seventeen. All right, the next one. These parks were formerly one park known in the Victorian era as Riverview Park. The park was developed and owned in the early eighteen nineties by the Yellow Street Car Line. In the late eighteen nineties, Riverview Park, an additional farmland was purchased by the Junior Order of Mechanics to build a national orphanage on the land. As many as eleven hundred children lived there at one time, and the director of the home was a highly respected was highly respected in the community. The orphanage closed its doors in nineteen forty-eight, and in nineteen sixty-eight, the Junior Order alumni in the city of Tiffin with the assistance of Senator Turner requested two sections of land be given to the city to be used as parks and named in honor of the children of the orphanage and its former director. Anybody on that one?
Junior Home Park.
Yeah, yep, so that's that's Junior Home and and Kernan Parks. So Kernan was the superintendent there at the orphanage, and they called him Dad Kernan, so that was kind of his nickname there. So the land and the buildings were bought by the state in nineteen forty-eight to be used as a state hospital. Senator Turner's father was an alumni of the orphanage. All right, we'll give you two more questions. So if you haven't participated yet, Bryce is going to call on you. All right, this park located along the Sandusky River was acquired by the city in nineteen seventy-six. This twenty-six acre area has a tragic history. The land was formerly the Wyatt Wyatt, I don't know how you pronounce it, but that's that's how I'm going to pronounce it. Line Quarry at the beginning of the century. The nineteen thirteen flood filled the quarry with water and washed away several surrounding homes. Fifteen residents of the area drowned in the flood, and the homes were not rebuilt. The city used the quarry as a dump until it was filled and leveled. And I'll even give you guys an extra hint. It was mentioned in Adam's CDBG presentation.
Nature Trails.
Oh, yes, Councilman Jones, with the win. Yes, and Nature Trails Park, which actually they broke ground on today for the improvements to that park, so. So here is the proposed park here, which is, you know, it won't be red lines here in a couple of weeks, it'll actually be pavement, so we're looking forward to that improvement here in twenty twenty-two, so. All right, last question, and then I'll quit boring you guys. This park was formerly the old cemetery located at the start of the Rock Creek Trail. It became neglected, overgrown with weeds, and the high water of Rock Creek was exposing the graves in the cemetery. So in nineteen oh five, the city paid twelve dollars in acknowledgement of the land as a public park. Uh-oh, Councilman Jones again. There we go, yes, yep. Yeah, so what everybody refers to as Little Hedges, actually Josiah Hedges Park, but, you know, better known as Little Hedges. So in nineteen fifteen, the remains from the graves had been moved to Green Lawn Cemetery. Park was landscaped and beautified by the planting and profusion of peony bushes and trees. Today, it is a pretty shaded park with a playground and picnic area. And there's a tiebreaker, although I think Councilman Jones is in the lead, and he might run away with this one. But how many parks does the city of Tiffin currently own and or operate?
Fifteen.
Oh, no.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah, so with the inclusion of the East Green complex there, which the city of Tiffin operates, that would be our nineteenth park, so I'm not going to list them all for you, but kind of jump into what's new in twenty-two, and we'll get out of your guys' hair. So this is what we are excited for. As Bryce talked, or Bryce and I, I guess I talked about, and Adam talked about the Nature Trails Park improvements, which, like I said, broke ground today. We are looking to have a quarter-mile ADA accessible paved loop trail, paved parking lot off of East Davis Street, play structure with poured-in-place surfacing, swing set, and park benches. So that's much-needed improvement to that park that we are super excited to see go in this year, so. All right, final part here. Just some capital projects that we're very happy for and thankful to city council for approving this wonderful design. This inclusive play structure, we plan to break ground August fifteenth. It will take about thirty days to get it all leveled, set, poured, so hopefully having a dedication middle of September, so we'll be able to use it for yet a couple of months of this year. We're going to be having a digital and digital sign installed in front of Kathy's lap. Having a digital sign installed in front of the flagpole, the outdoor pool. This has been kind of a capital project request for the last couple of years for us, but the funds were finally able to be appropriated to do this project. This would be nice just to help advertise what's happening in the parks, not only hedges, but the parks throughout town. So looking forward to having that go in this May. We have our Wi- the Wi-Fi partnership going in going in with fast communications. The red circles are not UFO landing spots, those are Wi-Fi, kind of the strength, if you will, the signal that would be kind of, you know, put off from the wireless receivers that are out there. Looking to hopefully hopefully have that wrapped up maybe by the end of twenty twenty-two. So that's another big infrastructure piece that's going in that will just make a really Headless Boyer Park stand up even more for the city. And these are just some of our bigger events that are happening. We have Thursday night tunes coming back again at the East Green. Our day camps registration and everything goes live tomorrow with that. Those fill up, as we all know, last year, I think it was like fifteen minutes was everything was filled up. They're they're just they're always a hit, being outdoors and then the nature. And then our Fourth of July celebration this year, we've been invested more money into our fireworks display because it's our bicentennial. We have music going the entire day. We're going to have a car show this year. Cruising through the times is our car show. I'm looking forward to that and just getting out and adventuring in the parks. So that's it. Questions?
Councilman Jones.
Yes, Mr. Kuhn, how many employees are there on the Park and Recreation Department?
Yes, we have myself, we have Mason, and then we have our groundskeeper, Todd Maddox. We have three full-time employees. And then obviously, we bump up in the season, summer seasonals. Anywhere, we try to get thirty to thirty-five employees, that's maintenance staff to day camp, to supervisor for the pool, as well as lifeguards. We have over one, yeah, two hundred acres of grass that needs groomed weekly, along with, gosh, only knows how many trash cans in all of the parks that need emptied three times a week and nine ball fields.
Okay, thank you. Limited staff like that, you get a lot done, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Bryce, why don't you stop sharing the screen there? That way, I don't I can't, I don't know if you can, but I can't see all the council members, just in case any of them did have their hand up, sorry. There we go.
You have it now? Yes, oh, should I call on?
Thank you. More than a question, you know, the reason Councilmember Jones knew all those answers to the questions is he lived through all that.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. And just a side issue, my brother Wesley A. Jones passed away in nineteen eighty-seven in an accident, car accident, but he used to before nineteen eighty-seven go down to Nature Trails Park with a weed whacker, and he was just trying to improve that area. And I guess I wasn't motivated to go along beside him, but he had a vision, what's that, thirty-five years ago, and probably looking down on Nature Trails Park and saying, no, I'm not saying he started it, but he was a so that's part of the the history that I've lived through, so thank you.
Yes, hopefully this by this improvement with the CDBG funds going into that park will kind of bring some more light to that area. It's right on the river, so that's one of our pieces. We're going to really try to tackle this next winter is open up the the riverside and actually be able to see the water and not through the woods. So we got we got a lot of work this coming winter to clear that all out and make that accessible as well.
Any other questions for Bryce or Mason? Well, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate. Oh, Dan Perry coming in there last minute.
Last second, or just a comment. Just want to thank Bryce and Mason. It's the our parks have really been something to be proud of. You know, especially these last few years, you can see they have taken a lot of big strides and, you know, really and really have improved them, you know, these these last few years and drawn families to Tiffin like we've talked about before. I think the parks go a long way with that, so kudos to you guys. You guys are killing it and just keep it up.
Thank you very much, Dan.
Yeah, I would echo that. Bryce, Mason, Todd, I know he's not here for the presentation tonight, but the the three of you, the amount of work that gets done in our parks is pretty incredible, so thank you for everything. We're really excited for the Fourth of July this year. Let's just hope for good weather. We've been blessed the last how many years with it, and let's hope we at least get one more year out of it with everything that we have planned, but yeah, yeah, we are extremely appreciative, though, of all of you at the Parks Department. Thank you very much for everything, and we're looking forward to an exciting twenty twenty-two.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple of quick items since we're a little later than usual at this point. Just to provide everyone, I know council receives the updates, but a quick rundown for the public on where we are at financially. We finished the month of March down compared to March of 2021. We were down about 2.24%, which was about $21,000 to the negative as far as income tax returns go when compared to the previous year, the same period. However, we closed out the end of the first quarter of 2022 ahead of last year's first quarter by almost 14 full percent, which equates to about $380,000. So we had a record-setting first quarter of income tax collections, the highest figure that we've ever collected in the city's history here in the first quarter of 2022. However, we will continue to keep an eye on things, knowing that the month of March, we did finish down. We're hoping that that is certainly not a trend. So we'll keep council updated. I do want to let council know and the public that the city is in discussions with a private firm for the possibility of bringing a substantial amount of high-speed fiber throughout various parts of the Tiffin community. This would be done through a grant that the private firm has received, which would be little or no cost actually to us local taxpayers. It would be put in throughout the community due to rural broadband grants that have been provided from both the state and federal government. We have just now begun the discussions, but we understand that fiber and access to high-speed internet is an important tool to bring families here for economic development opportunities and the fact that more people than ever are working from home. And if we want to continue to grow this community, we're going to have to ensure that we are tied into some very high-speed fiber here in the community. So we will continue to keep council updated. This could be a future item that will be coming on council's agenda at a later point if we're able to come to terms with with this private company and bringing the fiber to the Tiffin community. A quick update, Nature Trails, I know we've heard a couple of parks updates already this evening, but Nature Trails construction did begin today at that site in Second Ward, approximately three weeks construction timeline. And then we will be scheduling a ribbon cutting once all that, that park rehab is completed, complete with the new playground, the walking path and other items. As mentioned in Bryce's, Bryce and Mason's report, registration is now live tomorrow morning for their park programs. Can't say it enough. Please get in early. These programs fill up very quickly every year. And I know a lot of people were disappointed last year getting in just a few days late and finding out some of our, our very sought-after programs at the parks from our programming to our day camps were already filled for the year. So please get those registrations in ASAP. Registration goes live tomorrow morning. To report to everyone, the Ann Street Sewer Rebuild has been completed. As you recall, that was one of our primary projects for this year as far as the rebuild of that sewer. There were some significant issues within the sewer itself, so it has completely been replaced. Kudos to Brandon Burner at Public Works and Matt Watson in the Engineers Office for all their coordination and work in getting that project completed without any hiccups. Curb ramp construction will begin next week in the city. That is out ahead of our street resurfacing program that will follow then in a couple of months after. All of the curb ramps will be brought into ADA compliance as they're required by federal law, well ahead of our street paving program this year that is set to begin in just a couple of months. I want to praise Chief Rob Chapel of the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division and his department. We had an unannounced visit from the Board of Pharmacy. They conducted a very thorough review of our operations, our procedures, and everything came back with just phenomenal results, glowing, glowing results. So thank you, Chief Chapel and the members of the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division for just keeping everything in tip-top shape and ensuring that all the policies and procedures around different pharmaceutical products that the Tiffin Fire Rescue Division administers from their paramedic program are done properly. That is an important visit, no kind of a heads up. And it's something that, that we can lose our certification if it is not maintained properly. So I can't speak volumes enough to, to the job that that department has done to ensure that that visit was successful. I want to congratulate Russ and Deb Garrus on the purchase of Bear Brothers here in Tiffin. A ribbon cutting was held last week. It's exciting to see a business that's been around since the late 1880s continue under local management and operation in downtown Tiffin. I also would like to thank everyone who was involved and attended our bicentennial kickoff ceremony just a couple of Fridays ago. It was a very well-attended event at the Ritz Theater, very good crowd, just an exciting event. And also thank you to those who provided the city with the 1822 flag that will now hang throughout the year in front of City Hall. A big shout out to both Calvert and Columbian, that both of them put on amazing musicals over the last couple of weeks. I attended both. Just want to say that, that the acting, the singing, it was, it was college quality, if not better. Both schools should be very proud, as well as the parents, the students for the job well done with their spring musicals this year. And then last but not least, I would like to remind everyone that it's hard to believe we're at this point already, but early voting begins already tomorrow morning. And that is for the May primary. Early voting kicks off tomorrow, April 5th. As you all know, there are local candidates on the ballot from County Commissioner to Common Pleas Court, as well as the City Road and Bridge Levy that will also be featured on the ballot. So get out if you're concerned about weather, you're concerned about health, whatever it may be, go ahead and vote early. You can show up to the Board of Elections, walk right in with your ID, cast your ballot, and you don't have to worry about a, a late season snowstorm on the day of the primary, a rainstorm, whatever, or worry about getting ill and missing that. Or you can also request an absentee ballot and have that mailed to you and mail it back in. There are a couple of events coming up this coming Saturday, October the 9th. Cycling Without Age is holding a 5K fundraiser that kicks off at 9:30 a.m. at Hedges Boyer Park. I'm excited. I'm going to take part and deliver a proclamation that morning for the group. Wonderful organization. They're tri-shaws that are out allowing individuals who are not able to ever cycle, let alone very often get outdoors. They're able to actually go on a cycling trip throughout the community, just it really tugs at your heartstrings. So thank you, Pat Demonti and the others who are involved with Cycling Without Age. We're excited for that this coming weekend at Hedges Boyer Park. That is Saturday, April 9th at 9:30. This coming April, the 11th, which is Monday, there will be a ribbon cutting held for the High Life Recovery Center. That is opening at 1660 West Market Street. That is the location that used to be Slate Realty, next to the Verizon Store on West Market. Thursday, April the 14th, a ribbon cutting will be held for the new Keebler Shield, new Keebler Shoes location. They're moving into the former AAA building on East Market Street. And last but not least, just a reminder, City Hall is closed on Friday, April the 15th, in observance of Good Friday. With that, Madam President, it concludes my report this evening, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mayor. Questions for the mayor? Councilman Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. More of just a clarifying thing for myself. I have gotten a few questions about the hotel Mr. Hernando keeps or wants to do downtown. And I have informed these people that it is a private deal and the city has nothing to do with that other than the zoning stuff. But they were, they were just confused. They, they thought the project was, was dead, and then they saw a report about it, and I think it just got confused. I just wanted, I was just curious if you could just clarify.
Yeah, so the, the hotel project, Danny, is, is dead, at least at this point. The project that I assume you're referring to is the multifamily housing unit that Mr. Hernando, it has a, a private deal with the owner of the building immediately when you cross the, the Market Street Bridge on the right-hand side. It is all on private property. It is a deal between him and the owner of that property. The city's only deal in this, I guess, or not even deal in this, is the fact that it has to, of course, go through our, our city zoning board, our city architectural board review. But it is a private deal through and through without city involvement. It's no different than someone purchasing a home from someone else or someone purchasing a business here in town. The city in no way is involved in that. Now, the two city parking lots where the hotel and condominium complexes were going to go, those still remain under city control. There is no, there, there's really nothing at this point indicating what our future plans are. If we do offer them up for sale, it would be through a proposal process where anyone could submit proposals for what they would like to do to those sites. The headline was very misleading, I feel, and I, I don't like to often call out the media, but the headline was very misleading, and if you ask me quite honestly incorrect how it made it sound like the Riverfront Project was back. That, that really is not the case at all. This is just one of three pieces of the project that Mr. Hernando was planning to do. The one piece, of course, that remains on private property and remains a private deal. So it's a shame that that headline referred to it as being back on because to me it was very misleading.
Right. I, I just wanted to just make sure we clarify that. And, you know, sometimes people just read headlines and they don't really read the substance of the article. So.
Yeah, I think if you read most of the article, you would have gathered that it's a private deal. The thing was the headline, which is what most folks read very quickly, or they may see as they're walking by the stack of newspapers for sale, certainly gave a different story than what the body of the article did.
Right. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Councilman Perkins, did you have a question?
Yeah, just one quick question about broadband. I know you're very early in the process, but will this be, this will be residential and commercial access to fiber optic?
Yes, that, so like I said, we're very early in this, this stage. So we've had a couple of initial meetings. They've got another one where they're coming to the city later this week. But yes, that would be the goal is of course for commercial and residential access to broadband. There are big grant dollars out there for downtown areas, for example, as they're kind of seen as, as the Midwest is viewed more and more as kind of the new age Silicon Valley, where a lot of people are trying to escape California and other places because of the ridiculous cost of living. We're seeing those individuals look at places like Tiffin and like smaller communities in the Midwest, but they need ultra broadband, high-speed access, and those are some of the prime areas that we can bring in here. It's not going to happen overnight. They'll tackle the, the, the larger, more important areas first before it branches out. But I think it has the potential to be a, a really golden opportunity for us here in Tiffin. We can get a lot of good done at really no cost to us potentially. But there's still a lot of things to work out, but I want to keep counsel abreast of this as we go forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mayor? Yes, Councilman Perry?
Another thing, just wanted to kind of piggyback off, you know, the mayor congratulating Calvert and Columbian made me, remind me of a, a event coming up. Brody Conley, who has won state back-to-back for wrestling. We are going to have him on the party bike and do kind of a parade around Tiffin and in the downtown. It'll be April 14th, and once we get a route and more information, I'll make sure I send it over to you next so you can send something out. But just wanted to kind of, I know this will be our last meeting before that event takes place. I just want to kind of bring that up.
Thanks, Dan. I appreciate that. And we've got a ceremony scheduled at Columbian High School also, where we're going to do some proclamations through him and your team as well. But we appreciate you doing that. We've got a lot of great, great young individuals here in this community, and it's wonderful that we can showcase them and their talents, whether it's sporting events, whether it's like tonight, we saw the young lady with the artwork, the chalk, chalk, chalk work, the folks at the musicals, or even just the, 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 the things that, that we're hearing that are being done at the individual schools. It's just, it's great. We've got to praise our young people because they're the future of this community.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the mayor? Awesome. Thank you. Clerk of Council, Anne Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the financial report for the month of March. Total receipts for the month were $4,151,498.40. Total expenses for the month were $3,676,245.36. General fund unencumbered balance is $3,911,287.53. Income tax receipts for March 2022 were $906,614.40. That was an actual decrease between March 20, 20 of 22 and March 20 of 21 of $20,757.16. However, year-to-date tax receipts are up 14.76%. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for March was $109,783.19. The unexpended balance for all funds is $33,491,34.54, which is the same as the bank balances for this time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions for the Director of Finance? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Before we accept this as presented, I just want the public to know that City Council is looking over these reports before we approve them. And I just had a couple of questions that I glazed, gleaned, whatever that word is, off of these reports that we got ahead of time. And I don't need an answer tonight, but one of them was an outstanding check to Game Craze for $1,984. I couldn't begin to guess what that was. There's another outstanding check to some doctor for $2,000. I'd be curious about that. Four checks in 2021 for $0. Those haven't been cashed yet. So those four don't bother me. That's $0. And there was March 25th to 22, there were five checks totaling $51,879 made out to the city of Tiffin. So before I accept this as presented, I would like to at least get an idea of what some of these items were.
Kathy, would you like to respond or do you need to take that away?
Actually, I can answer most of them. I did have a chance to look at some of these. The, the ones that were outstanding checks that were zero, I looked those up and a lot of those had to do with corrections that we had to make. And so they, the system gives them a number that looks like a check number, but there wasn't an actual check written. So all I had to do for those was actually go in and actually cash them. I know that sounds weird because the actual check wasn't written, but you cashed them in the system. So I actually did those for today, so they should come off of the outstanding checklist and should no longer be there. The other checks that you were asking about were, where the description was city of Tiffin. Those were the deduction checks for payroll, and I think this is something that you might have asked about before. There, they were all having to do with the employee share for the health insurance, the dental insurance, the vision insurance. The other one was for the Tiffin withholding tax. And I think the last one was the employees' flexible spending that they have taken out every pay. So that's what all of those were.
Okay, thank you.
And when I looked up for, it was a check for game craze. The only description that I saw said it was for, for Fourth of July events. And the last one was for, it looks like an emergency room doctor, and there wasn't any other description. So I'll need to pull that invoice to see if there's anything else on there to tell you exactly what that was.
Okay, thank you very much. Satisfied myself and hopefully the public.
Thanks, Councilman Jones. Any other questions? Yes, yeah, Councilman Jones, do you have a question?
One of these days I'm going to try to stump the Director of Finance, but not today.
Can't wait for it. Councilwoman Yana Tino.
Thank you, Madam President. If there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Treasurer's report and the bank reconciliation.
There's a motion to accept the Finance Director's report and bank reconciliation for the month of February. Is there a second, Councilman Jones?
I will second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion to second any discussion. Seeing, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Seeing uh seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Um, Director of Law Brent T. Howard.
No report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. We are now under written communications.
Thank you, Madam President. We have Mayor's Request for Legislation Number Twenty-two dash ten. Appointment to Civil Service Commission of Scott D. Herman.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number Twenty-two dash ten will be forwarded to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number Twenty-two dash eleven, sanitary sewer easement rung-ins reserved.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number Twenty-two dash eleven will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number Twenty-two dash eleven. To amend the two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to appropriate funds into the Council Clerk Contractual Services Budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number Twenty-two dash eleven has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance twenty-two dash thirty.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F twenty-two dash twelve. To amend the two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to appropriate funds into the capital improvement budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number Twenty-two dash twelve has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-two.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F twenty-two dash thirteen. To amend the two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to reallocate funds in the street maintenance budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F twenty-two dash thirteen has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-three.
That concludes the written communications.
Mayor, do we need to formally call out and sign uh the additional request for legislation for the Fairview, Fairview Hill?
I don't necessarily think so because it's under the purview of that committee, but it's just, it's the exact same. It's a sanitary and green easement for Fairview Hill condominium.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. I mean, yeah, thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step, will not step to the podium, raise their hands. Um, via the raise hand button on Zoom, um, and direct their questions to Council President.
Is there anyone in the public uh waiting room that wishes to address counsel? Click the raise hand button, please, and we can let you in. We only have two in there, Madam President, so not seeing any hands. I don't want to cut it off too quickly, but uh, I do not, there were more folks in there. I don't know if they uh, if we drug things out too long on the early end, or if they they were just here to listen maybe to the to the Park's presentation, but we've lost quite a few, so. Okay, we see no hands, so back to you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Okay, seeing none, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number twenty-two dash thirteen, introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council to continue certain tax incentive agreements with local businesses and property owners and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution Twenty-two dash thirteen.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three, introduced by Kenneth Jones. Ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to grant an easement from the city of Tiffin, Ohio to the Protestant Episcopal Church known as Trinity Church, and also known as Old Trinity Church. For an encroachment on city property at one twenty-five East Market Street and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for City Council to pass ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three.
You're saying motion to pass ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Emergency passes with vote of five to zero. I'll now ask uh the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars into the Council Clerk Contractual Services Budget for two thousand twenty-one election expense.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty, Councilman, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for suspension of the three reading rule on ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty.
There's a motion, oh, I'm sorry. There's a motion to suspend um ordinance twenty-two dash thirty. Is there a second? Oh, sorry, Councilwoman Yanatuno. Couldn't see you. You're in the corner.
You're fine.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to suspend ordinance twenty-two dash thirty. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, purpose of this ordinance is uh due to election expenses.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Did the majority of this go to the Advertising Tribune, or? I'm just curious, it just sounds like a lot of money for expenses, advertising, et cetera, et cetera. If somebody could help me out here.
Director of Law?
Yes.
Yeah, I I had believed that all of the money that we would pay for the expense goes to the county, uh, to the Board of Elections. And they have a variety of expenses. There might be some public notices that they need to put in about the election. Um, there were, uh, there's quite a bit of language, as you know, in the charter amendments. So there was more copying and printing costs, expenses. So uh, these, all this money goes to the county for the Board of Elections and what they incurred for our election related to the Charter Review Amendments.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We want uh first vote on the suspension. Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Yanatuno. Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-one, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance approving a chip mark partnership agreement with the city of Fosteria and Seneca County. And authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-one. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for suspension of City Council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-one. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to second the motion, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. We have an April twenty-second deadline necessitating the uh suspension.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Um, Madam President, this has an emergency.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you. Um, we will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of five to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Yanatuno. Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
And then it's twenty-two dash thirty-one passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-two, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to appropriate a total of twenty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents into the capital improvement budget for the Trail Connectivity Project. And returning unused grant funds for the electric vehicle charging station.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-two. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for this uh suspension of City Council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-two.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend uh Council's three reading ru- rule and passage of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-two. Is there a second, Councilman Perry?
No, second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, uh, this is a two-part, uh, two-part ordinance. Uh, one is uh, uh, the twenty-three, uh, twenty-three thousand dollar uh, deposit into the capital, capital improvement budget. And the second part of the ordinance is to return unused grant funds for the electric vehicle and charging station uh to the Tiffin Charitable Foundation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. And Councilman Leopard touched on it, but since their donations and grants, we just want to get that into the city, coffer, directed where it needs to be. That's the reason for the emergency. Or, I'm sorry.
The suspension, yeah.
Dispensing the three reading rule.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yeah.
And Perry?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-two passes with a vote of five to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-three, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to reallocate sixteen thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars in the street maintenance budget.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-three. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for the suspension of City Council's three rating rule and passage of ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of Council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-three. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Simply put, we are just shuffling money between uh uh, three accounts in the street maintenance department for the purpose of uh having a summer employee, um, summer employee in the street department.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of five to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-three passes with a vote of five to zero.
That concludes the legislation, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, the one item of business I wanted to obviously raise here is um whether we would like to meet in Zoom for our next council meeting. Or if uh council would prefer to hold that meeting in person. So open for discussion. Yes, Councilman Perkins.
I would think it's safe to probably have the next one or two on Zoom. Uh, just with the situations going on, and then most of that should resolve itself hopefully by then.
Thank you.
And?
Councilman Jones.
I concur with the Councilmember Perkins. I got that right, member Perkins.
It's okay, I struggle with it too. Thank you. Okay, um, if that's, if that's uh council's desire, would somebody like to make a motion? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll make a motion that we continue for the next meeting in, hold it as a Zoom meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion for the next Tiffin City Council meeting uh to be held via Zoom as opposed to in person, and we will revisit the um, we will revisit um the following meeting at the next meeting via Zoom. Is there a second? Councilman Jones.
I will second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing that all, that's the clerk to call the uh, vote on this vote. Have you muted, Anne?
There, okay. Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
And Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes with a vote of five to zero. Is there any other business to come for council today? Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Yeah, I need to organize a Street Sidewalks and Sewers meeting. Um, is a fair, we could do the next uh Street Sidewalks Sewers meeting on Zoom. Uh, next Tuesday for four thirty. I know Dawn and Ken might have some things going on, so hopefully Zoom, they can be a part of that meeting. Would that be a good time and date for everyone?
I'm good.
Danny?
Um, I'm good too, yes.
I have baseball practice at night um for my
At four thirty?
Uh, it starts at five, but by the time I
We might be done by then.
Councilman Perkins, is it gonna be a long meeting?
No, I wouldn't think so.
What if we just do it right before the eighteenth meeting, since we're already be Zoom?
Okay.
We could do that.
Yeah, if that's okay for getting this legislation passed.
Is that enough time?
Yeah, as long as uh you all are willing to have the legislation drafted to that night, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, yeah, we can have it drafted.
Yeah, I'll prepare it for that meeting on the eighteenth.
Okay, yep, let's just do that. Uh, so I'd like to call a Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee meeting uh for the Mayor's Request of Legislation Twenty-two dash eleven. Running Reserve Sanitary Sewer Easement and also Fairview Condos, uh, which doesn't have a legislation number quite yet. For six P M. April eighteenth.
Thank you. Any other business this evening? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Councilman Leopard, did you have something?
What time was that, Zach? Did you say six?
Yeah, six P M.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, thank you guys for your time and have a great evening. We will stand adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.